Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, May 25th, 2010. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Glancy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Here.
Mayor Gillette?
Item four, request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. I have none noted. There will be none. Item five, special presentations and announcements. This begins the special presentation portion of our city council meeting, and please give me a moment to step to the podium, and we'll begin. Over the years, city council has recognized many of our community's outstanding sports groups. It's been said many times over that our residents have invested their time, effort, and resources in developing a safe, family-oriented community. This is evident in the value placed on the qualities that sports programs instill in our youth. Tonight is the recognition of regional team champions that have been successful in their academic talents as well as their athletic ability. I'd like to introduce Thousand Oaks High School head coach, Rich Endress, to tell us more about the Thousand Oaks Boys Basketball Team being recognized as the CIF Southern Section Academic Champions. Coach Endress? Come on down, please. I'd love to be able to say Go Lancers, but I can't say that. Oh, okay. Oh, I can. Go Lancers. Before I talk about the team, I'd like to introduce the team. Austin Kegley. Anthony Jacks. Evan Hall. Tommy Lopez. Austin Solomon. Sam Donahue. Jacob Cusworth. This team has done something that's not uncommon at Thousand Oaks High School, that's both achieving on the court as well as achieving off the court. It makes my job a lot easier with working with such academic scholars as we have here. This team's grade point average was 2.69, grade point average, as a team, and that's phenomenal, because that was one of the large schools, and they had the best GPA in all of CIF for the big schools. And I've been lucky enough to have around me a fantastic coaching staff with John Moniz and Coach Sanchez and Coach Patsky, and they've been able to help me work with these young men, and I'm very, very proud of this group. We have a tradition at Thousand Oaks, and these young men have worked very hard to continue that, to have both academics and athletic, high-quality athletics and winning. This is a league championship team as well as an academic scholar team. I want to thank you. Coach, thank you very much, and if I could have you and your A-coaches also come down, we're going to take a picture in just a minute, right after I read this commendation. Are your other coaches here? Oh, okay, okay. Then, gentlemen, this commendation is in honor of Thousand Oaks High School Boys Basketball Team, 2010 CIF Southern Section Team Academic Champions. Thousand Oaks High School Boys Basketball Team, grade point average of 3.689, was the highest in the Boys Basketball CIFSS Southern Section category of schools with enrollments of 1,500 or greater. And the team was honored at an academic awards ceremony on April 27th, 2010, at the Angel Stadium of Anaheim, an event sponsored by Anaheim Angels and Toyota. And the team was recognized as champion in one of 22 sports categories and 1,451 team entries for the 2009-10 school year. The team is proud to have captured the Miramani League title for the 2009-10 season, and the Thousand Oaks High School Boys Basketball Team demonstrated their natural ability, outstanding spirit of dedication, hard work, and commitment in representing their school and community. Now therefore, I, Dennis C. Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Thousand Oaks High School Boys Basketball Team and congratulate the team and coaches on their 2010 CIF Academic Championship. Gentlemen, congratulations. sporting event in our nation, the Amgen Tour of California Bike Race. Over 80 professional cyclists began their trek from the Oaks Mall down Thousand Oaks Boulevard and into the mountains, where they completed four loops through the treacherous roads and back to the finish line on Towns Gate Road. I'd like to introduce our city's Public Information Officer, Andrew Powers, who will review the activities that made this event so exciting and memorable.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. It's been my pleasure to serve as the city's lead staffer on the Amgen Tour of California for the past nine months. Along with our partners, the Canaho Chamber, City of Westlake Village, City of Agoura Hills, Amgen, and a slew of local volunteers, we pulled off stage eight of the greatest professional cycling race in America this past Sunday. By all accounts, the Canaho Valley stage was a huge success. The countless hours of pre-planning for public safety, parking, crowd control, and traffic management paid off in a well-orchestrated event. I'd like to say a special thank you to a few key players that helped to make this day possible. The Oaks Shopping Center, our start sponsor, Malibu Family Wines, our presenting sponsor, the Greater Canaho Valley Chamber of Commerce, TOPA Property Management Company and Regency Property Management Company, both of which let us use parts of their private property in order to park vehicles and to stage the festival, over 400 race day volunteers, and the 30 members of our local organizing committee that worked for nine months on all the details. I'd like to introduce the leader of that group, Jerry Jane, to share a few of his thoughts on this great event.
Thank you, Drew. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm very tired today. I'm more tired today than I was yesterday. It's been a long year. Drew said nine months. It's a core group of us have been working on this pretty much for a year. Councilmember Irwin, you and I had coffee one day to discuss the initial proposal, but just about a year ago, I believe. So it's been very successful, like Drew said. The stage went off with minimal hitches. I think we orchestrated a fantastic event that made our community look exceptionally well, not only to the individuals that work on the committee or the people that live in the area, but internationally. The coverage was fantastic. The press conference and every single piece of information that has come forth within the last 48 hours has just showed that all of our hard work has been worth it, and they said that the stage was exceptionally well-run. So from that standpoint, huge success, as Drew indicated. The core group of the local organizing committee worked very well. We've met every other Wednesday at the city manager's office for the last nine months. For the last two months, we met every single Wednesday. So a number of us have put in a great amount of time. My wife is very thankful that this event is over. As a cycling diehard, I think I maybe needed a little bit of this to see behind the scenes, how events like this are run, but I'm very glad, from a volunteer standpoint, that a number of us have been able to provide back to the community that we live in. I would like to thank Candace Hung, Andrew Powers, Kathy Lowry, who are here tonight. They put in a tremendous effort. Also, Jim Freihoff and Bill Ayub put in a tremendous amount of work. Barb DiAngelo, who works with the Thousand Oaks Volunteers and Policing. A number of individuals have put in a great deal of work. In closing, I'd just like to say that I received an email today from the president of AEG, Andrew Messick, and he said that our stage was the best stage that they've ever had in their entire event. So that's a great compliment coming from that individual. So I'd like to say thank you, and hopefully we can do this again in the future. Take care.
Lastly, we've had a myriad of local partners that have helped this to make this such a positive community event. One of those partners is here this evening to make a special presentation to the local organizing committee. Let me introduce Ed LaRoca from Canaho Valley Cyclists.
Thank you for your time. I also want to introduce J.C. Simmons, past president of the Canaho Valley Cyclists, we're the local bike club, and he is currently in charge of advocacy and education, so he's working closely with the city on bike paths and education issues. Would just take a minute of your time to say, to represent the cycling community, and thank you for the effort and expenditure that Jerry just outlined, all the hard work. To have that tour come here was basically a little piece of heaven for cyclists, to see the guys that we watch on TV riding in Europe right here in our own backyard. I can certainly echo the remarks as to how successful it was. The internet's just completely abuzz from all our members, saying how much fun they had and where they were, and all the pictures are getting created and whatnot. But to the point, we do want to recognize the expense that it took to do that, and we were able to generate $5,000 out of our charity event that we would like to donate to the LOC to help pay for this. And hopefully we get to see it again next year.
Thank you, sir, very much. Thank you, Drew.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, if I could just make some brief comments as well?
I'm sorry.
With your permission, I'd like to just make some brief comments as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think Andrew did a good job of covering the sponsors that made this event possible, but I also want to recognize some of the public agencies. The coordination and logistics between the Thousand Oaks Police Department, the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, the California Highway Patrol, the Ventura County Fire Department, the Los Angeles County Fire Department, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, our own Public Works Department, and, as Ben mentioned, the three cities that make up the Canaho Valley, if you will, Agoura, Westlake, and Thousand Oaks, really did a great job to make the day a very pleasurable one for, I don't know what the final count was, but it was in the tens of thousands, certainly, to make it a safe day, to make it an enjoyable day for everybody there. And then last but certainly not least, our own city employees, many of whom volunteered there, but Assistant City Manager Candace Hung and, as well as Andrew Powers, they certainly need to be recognized for the great job that they did. And then certainly, every good idea starts with a vision, and in this particular case, it was Councilmember Irwin who really had the vision and the passion about bringing this type of event back here to Thousand Oaks. And so a lot of thank-yous need to go out in acknowledgements, and it was a great day for our city, for our community. The mayor did a great job making the presentations, a very busy guy that day, but it was really a great community event, and so on behalf of all the council, thank all of you for the great job that you did. Thanks very much.
And lastly, just to answer your question in terms of numbers, our public safety partners have estimated our attendance to be around 30,000 at the race finish footprint and about 100,000 course-wide. So we were up in that neighborhood. And you gave me a perfect segue, Councilmember Fox. For those of you that attended Sunday's festivities and watched on TV, you saw Mayor Gillette onstage several times. He was featured in a host of photographs on the internet, and we've got a framed copy of one of the best from Yahoo! Sports, and I'd just like to present that to the mayor as a thank you for all his support on race day.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment? Any of the rest of the council? Jackie? Tom? Claudia?
I'll just say a couple of words. It was really a phenomenal, a phenomenal day, and I have to, I know we've put thanks around, but really the vision and the enthusiasm came from the cycling community in Thousand Oaks, and we really had no idea how many people were so passionate, and people like Jerry Jane, that, you know, I was sitting on the phone and so excited when Ventura said that they weren't going to be able to take the stage, and he said it has to be in Thousand Oaks. And it was so wonderful to showcase the Canaho Valley and have all these partners there, and it was amazing, after all that planning, that it just went off without a hitch. So, you know, a big thank you again to all the cyclists and staff and the public agencies. It was really an amazing day for Thousand Oaks.
Thank you.
You know, I'd like to add that, as has been said, it was an absolutely awesome event. There were more smiling faces, so much joy and happiness to have this event in our community, and it was a great success. It depended on an awful lot of people putting in the effort. They did put in the effort. We should all be very grateful to them. It was very good.
Thank you. Claudia?
Yes, thank you. I also wanted to congratulate city staff for doing an outstanding job in putting this event together. It went, from my perspective, rather flawlessly. I am also very glad that we were able to bring this back to Thousand Oaks when it was first started, I believe, in 2005, 2006, and Amgen playing, of course, the pivotal role in sponsoring this, and Amgen being the corporate citizen that it is in Thousand Oaks, we do need to express our gratitude as well. And of course, as was already mentioned, the cyclists in this community, there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cyclists who also helped to make this happen. And Jerry buried the lead when you said that you received this congratulatory email from AEG to say that this was the best stage ever. I think that needs to be said more often. Thank you to everyone who had a hand in this. Thank you very much for making Thousand Oaks look fantastic.
Well, thank you, Claudia. That gives me a, the masters of understatement, I had an opportunity to talk to the CEO from Amgen when we were on the stage presenting the trophies, the final trophies, and I said, if there is anything that we as a community can do to come together to encourage this coming back next year as an annual event, we certainly want to work with you, and his comment was, well, that's pretty much up to AEG, so that, that's a good comment, so. And also, I was thinking back, the last really major international event that I was involved in in this county was 1984 Rowing and Canoeing venue at Lake Casitas, and I'll tell you, this was better. This had a lot more life to it and a lot less security, so. Drew, again, I can't say enough for all of your time, effort, and energy that you put into it and the way you handle it, with all of the support people. Thank you so very much. Our partners, Agoura Hills, Westlake Village, who committed their efforts to working incredible hours to make the race an event successful. This is the first time an event of this magnitude has taken place in any of our cities. Our local organizations, the businesses that were involved, our sponsors who committed their financial support for this fantastic event, and a special thank you to the more than 400 volunteers who worked in a myriad of capacities to make the day a wonderful experience for everyone who attended. Thank you to everyone. Okay, we move on to item six, public comments. Would the clerk please announce public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Four people have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening will be John Adams, John, followed by Linda Bronschweiger. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette, city council. John Adams, Thousand Oaks. Tonight, I'm here to introduce you to the new Deputy Finance Director, Carol Wilson. Carol comes from Northern California, where she has worked for two full-service cities in the Northern California area. She's a CPA, a Certified Public Accountant, with over 12 years of municipal finance experience, and so I've just taken this opportunity to introduce you to her and let her say a few words to the city council. Carol?
Good evening, Carol.
Thank you, John. Good evening. I'm so pleased to be here. I did a lot of research before even applying for the job, and I was so impressed with the city and the organization, and my impression was reiterated as I went through the interview process, the investment that John and the city manager's office and all the departments made in the interview process. It was very daunting, but I know that as a result, they're comfortable with me, and I feel so comfortable with the departments already, only being my second day. I'm just so pleased to be here and look forward to working with you and the organization and the citizens of Thousand Oaks. Thank you so much.
Carol, welcome. Thank you. John, I ask you, I understand that you've made a major investment in the City of Thousand Oaks?
Yes, I did. I actually bought a home in the last two weeks in Thousand Oaks and moving into the city mid-June, once my boys finished junior high and elementary school.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Linda Bronschweiger, followed by Chuck Cronin. Cronin?
Mayor Gillette, city council members, my name is Linda Bronschweiger, and I'm the Asian Citrus Syllid Outreach Coordinator for the Farm Bureau of Ventura County, and with a limited time, excuse me, but I'm going to read my presentation. I'm here tonight to share with you about a very serious threat to Ventura County citrus. Within the next five to 10 years, all citrus trees in Ventura County could be dead. No oranges, no lemons, no mandarins, and no grapefruit, and not just in commercial orchards. No citrus tree in any residential yard or garden. It's a real possibility. The reason is a bacterial disease called Wong Long Bing, or HLB. It is spread by a tiny aphid-like bug called the Asian Citrus Syllid, or ACP. HLB kills all varieties of citrus trees. It's the most serious citrus plant disease in the world today. Once a tree is infected, there is no treatment and no cure. Disease trees produce bitter, inedible, misshapen fruit, and eventually die. HLB has already destroyed citrus production in various parts of the world. In Florida, almost 50% of the citrus trees have died. ACP is an aphid-like insect that feeds on the leaves and stems of citrus trees and related plants. Although the syllid can damage plants, the real danger lies in its ability to transmit the deadly bacteria tree disease, HLB. It only takes a single infected syllid to carry the disease. Because there's no treatment or cure for the disease itself, the only way to halt the attack, is to, excuse me, to halt it, is to attack the insect and spread it, excuse me, attack the insects that spread it and prevent them from becoming established in Ventura County. ACP has spread through Asia, India, parts of Middle East, South, and ACP has spread through Asia, India, parts of Middle East, South, and Central America. It's been found in Mexico, Hawaii, Texas, Louisiana, Georgia, Alabama, South Carolina, and Florida. It arrived in Southern California in 2008 and is in San Diego, Imperial, Orange, and Los Angeles counties. The closest it is to us right now is Van Nuys, seven miles from the Ventura County border. Although HLB has not been found in California, it has been found in Western Mexico, 750 miles from the California border. ACP is expected in Ventura County, most likely in 2010. Based on other regions, HLB invariably shows up in areas infected by ACP within 18 to 24 months after the pest is detected. The economic stakes are high. Lemons, tangerines, oranges, grapefruits currently account for more than 24,000 acres, a quarter of the total irrigated ag land in this county, and generates at least $510 million a year in economic activity. Is that the end?
No, please continue.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Citrus supports more than 7,000 jobs and is a $510 million economic activity. The citrus industry also generates $19 million annually in indirect business tax. HLB does not pick and choose. It spreads here, it will eventually kill the citrus trees here. In these very brief three minutes, I had hoped to raise your concern. It's our desire to come back to the city council and give a formal presentation by one of our experts. We would like to outline what is being done in the state and the county to address this threat and to discuss how you and the residents can help detect the syllid and eradicate the syllid before HLB shows up. We appreciate this opportunity to do this presentation as soon as possible.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to your return, especially, my assumption is with the impact, the economic and all the other impacts of this, that there are people working on some sort of a response to try and kill off or neutralize, to do something in this.
Yes. Yes, there is currently a tremendous amount of research to try to actually cure the disease. But at this point, the only possibility for us is to eradicate the pest. And there are some scientific methods, but they're too complicated to talk about in three minutes.
I understand.
So, we would appreciate the opportunity to be on the council's agenda at some point in the near future.
Excellent. Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It sounds rather urgent to me, and I don't know how much longer we should wait in order to inform the public. Have you undertaken any steps thus far to inform residents who have citrus trees in their backyards as to what to do?
Yes, we are putting inserts in all of the utility bills. Thousand Oaks is coming up in this next cycle. We have been attending all the city councils, the board of supervisors. We are doing payroll inserts for large corporations. We're hitting all the farmers' markets, flea markets. We're getting materials at the commercial nurseries, and on and on and on. But it is a critical issue, and it is timely. We really need the public to inspect their trees because it will be a residential backyard tree that's likely to find the pest versus the commercial trees.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And you know the vehicle to get on the agenda and what have you. We're very interested and we want to, want to get as much information as possible and help in any way possible, so thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Chuck Cronin, followed by Tula Kalovas.
Chuck Cronin, 1912 Mayor of Poderas in Thousand Oaks, president of the Deer Creek Homeowners Association, Mayor Gillette in city council. I've been in many of a meeting to see the awards, and this meeting was like no others, where you're recognizing the efforts of either citizens, corporations, or people that put on events. My purpose here today is to recognize two departments of the city of Thousand Oaks and express our gratitude and thanks for their work on energy conservation. It may mean a small thing that a group of homeowners recognize or at least understand or may even know, the work that's going on by both the Public Works Department and the Planning Department, which is part of Community Development, John Prescott's group, in trying to make the city a much better at energy conservation. And also through your leadership on the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance, where you basically showing the way with the Hill Canyon Waste Treatment Plant, which has been a long-term effort to make it self-sufficient. We would like to offer a certificate of appreciation to those two department heads that are here, John Prescott and Mark Watkins, if they would come down and accept it, along with the city Public Works is also known, I think, as the silent service. And we know that it operates. I want to let them know, just a comment, that of all the utilities that we have, the electric, the cable, everything that comes to my house, and I'm at the far end of the pipe, I always have water.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cronin. Our final speaker under public comment, Tula Kalovas. Good evening, Mrs. Kalovas.
Good evening. I missed you all. I came tonight with a very deep concern and asking for help, which I'm hoping that you will consider seriously, as you have previously and helped me so many times. Yesterday, there was the planning commission with the subject of Los Robles. And of course, now it's not the time to talk about it. We'll have plenty of time to discuss it. However, that aroused a very deep concern in me because my neighborhood, which is on Frontale kitty corner from the hospital, none of my neighbors were informed all along about the project. And we were in the dark. We got suddenly informed by a letter Los Robles sent on the 27th, they mailed it the 27th. We got it toward the end of April, and the meeting was on the 5th of May. So then, we were presented with the facts. I do understand that, according to the rules, you only have to inform people within 500 radius, 500 feet radius. However, this is not enlarging a house or making a pool or a porch. This is a humongous mammoth project, and I'm asking the city manager to take consideration in correcting this discrepancy. The neighborhoods around the hospital are going to be very affected for at most eight or maybe more years. There will be noise, there will be lights, and then the final result will also be imposing on our lives because that big parking, whatever, we can talk about this another time. So, the people affected on Jans, on Lynn Road, it's a big radius, and it has to be proportional to the project. You cannot say collectively 500 feet and set a rule for a house, a hospital, a mall. It has to be according to how many people are affected and give us a chance. So, please consider it. You have helped me over the years so many times that I feel like I'm into a group of friends. And we all have to take interest. Over the years, 39 years now in Thousand Oaks, we have tried to make a very nice society, and I think we have, because there has been an understanding. So, this is, people were very upset yesterday, not knowing, and also, when you know what's going on, then you can present your reasons of counteracting it. And when you're hit with a final project like this is it, it's very, very unfair to us and our properties and our standard of living. So, thank you very much. Last night, I didn't sleep till 4:30 until I decided that I should come and ask for the city manager to look into this and altering the rule. And next, when we have meetings and presentations, the people around the hospital have to be informed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kalovas. That concludes the public comments section of the agenda. We'll move to item seven, redevelopment agency, council and, city and redevelopment agency consent calendar, pleasure of the council. Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
I would like to pull item K, and if there are no other objections, to approve the remainder of the calendar.
I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item K. Pleasure of the council.
That motion carries 5-0. I'm just going to read the title of the ordinance on L at this point. An ordinance amending sections 7-2.407, 9-3.946, 9-3.1002, 9-3.1003, and 9-3.1103, and deleting sections 9-3.927 and 9-3.1004, to delegate authority to the city engineer to approve the final maps and improvement agreements and exonerate security for encroachment permits.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And now back to, excuse me, item 7K. Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you, just for housekeeping purposes, because I did vote against the expenditure to build the angled parking at the lakes. I will again vote against the approval of this particular, is it ordinance? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure of the council. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move 7K.
I have a motion to move 7K. Comment to the motion. There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 4-1 with council member Bill De La Pena dissenting. And the ordinance title is an ordinance amending, I'm sorry, an ordinance adopting amendment number three to specific plan number 11 to allow angled parking as permitted use within subarea D, ponds, and seasonal ice skating rink.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Item H, public hearings, we have none. Item nine, excuse me, item nine, department reports. City Clerk, Mrs. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. General municipal election will be held on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2010, for the purpose of electing three council members for four-year terms. The nomination period is July 12th through August 6th and is extended to August 11th, 2010, if an incumbent does not file to run for office. Staff is requesting council to take the following action tonight. One is to adopt resolutions calling and giving notice of the election, requesting the Ventura County Board of Supervisors consolidate this election with the statewide general election, including a contract with the county for election services, and adopting regulations for candidate statements, which is an estimated cost of $1,000, which the candidate will deposit with the city if they choose to submit a candidate statement. We're asking the city council to authorize an expenditure, expenditure not to exceed $45,000, which will pay the county for election services as well as costs for materials, manuals, and forms. We're also asking the council to approve the League of Women Voters Request for Use of the Council Chambers and TOTV for a televised city council candidate forum on a date yet to be determined, but we anticipate late September or early October. The estimated cost of that is $3,000, which we've already budgeted in the city clerk department budget. Before I conclude, I would like to let those in attendance know that the city clerk department does have a ballot drop-off box for your vote-by-ballot, which used to be referred to as absentee ballots for the June 8th election. And people can drop that off during office hours and up to 5 o'clock PM on Election Day, June 8th. This concludes the staff report, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions of the city clerk? Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
No questions. I just, I'm ready to move approval.
Oh, okay. Anything down on that? Please, go ahead. Yes, Ms. Bill De La Pena?
Move approval of the staff recommendation for item 9A.
All three items?
All three items.
One, two, and three? Okay, we have a motion, staff recommendation, comment to the motion. There being none, maker of the motion, no further comment, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, will that be up on the website, the drop-off provision that for people that either more convenient or want to save the 88 cents that?
We don't currently have something on the web. We do have an election page for the activities coming up for the nomination period and the November election, but we will certainly add some information.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Item 9B, general plan land use element. John Speckter, senior planner. Mr. Speckter, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we have before us a request to initiate an amendment to the land use element of the general plan and to change the designation from mobile home park exclusive and commercial to high-density residential. High-density residential allows 15 to 30 dwellings per net acre. This is an aerial photo of the property that's located on Newberry Road. The front portion of the property is designated commercial. There's currently a tavern there. And the back portion, the south end, contains Canejo Mobile Home Park. There's a long history with this property dating back 2005, when the park owner notified the tenants of the mobile home park that he intended to close the park. In 2006, the owner filed the closure impact report, which is necessary, is a necessary step to close a mobile home park. Two years later, roughly, the city changed the land use element designation for this site from commercial to high-density residential. Then, later in that year, the city received a ballot initiative, and that initiative concerned all mobile home parks within the city of Thousand Oaks. And as allowed by California law, the city adopted that initiative by ordinance. Among other things, the ordinance changed the land use element designation for this particular site to mobile home exclusive and commercial. Another thing that it did was it established the payments that the park owner must make to those tenants that are displaced by the closure of the park. Those are often termed relocation assistance payments. Then in 2009, there was litigation that took place concerning the authority of the city to require the owner of the park to make the payments that are outlined in the ordinance. In January 2010, the court determined that the city did not have the authority to require the owner to pay all of the reasonable costs of relocation as defined in the ordinance. And in February of this year, the city approved the closure impact report, requiring payments to be made to the displaced tenants in line with the court decision. to be made to the displaced tenants in line with the court decision. In March of two thousand and ten, this year, the park owner filed this request that's before you tonight, to change the land use element to high-density residential, at least to initiate, to begin the study of the proposed change. As far as analysis of this, just briefly, I'd like to mention that this designation, fifteen to thirty dwelling units per acre, the high-density designation, offers the best chance to build affordable housing on this particular property. If the housing happens to be built, this housing could benefit low-income park residents, although housing that would be built would, would be unlikely that it would be available at the time that they're displaced. There are other designations, land use element designations, that could be considered besides high-density, such as medium density, which is four and a half to fifteen units per acre. In terms of the process from here, if the council elects to initiate this amendment, the planning commission will hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the council. The council will hold a public hearing and make the decision. And it's important to know, based on the initiative, the ordinance that we adopted in light of the initiative, the amendment will not go into effect until the relocation assistance, relocation assistance is provided to the tenants displaced by the closure, as outlined in the closure impact report. So staff is recommending that the city council adopt the proposed resolution in your staff report, and thereby initiating consideration of the change to high-density residential or another designation deemed desirable, to allow concurrent processing of any related entitlement applications, zone change, development permit, for example, and then to refer the amendment to staff for processing and to the planning commission for a recommendation. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Speckler. Questions, excuse me, questions of staff? Mrs. Bill De La Pena.
Thank you. And this may be a question perhaps better answered by the city attorney. We did have a conversation earlier today. Why, my question is, why are we not waiting the outcome of this lawsuit that was filed against the city until we go forward with this particular process?
Mrs. Albano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of the public. The city council made a decision on the closure, and what I was trying, when you read the ordinance, closure is separate from whether any park owner, let alone this park owner, has the right to come forward with a initiation of the general plan. So this application has been pending for two months. We have an obligation to bring it to council in a timely manner. Whether or not a lawsuit is pending on the closure does not have any effect on actions that you can take tonight. It also, as I said, the ordinance that the council adopted back in, sorry, two thousand and nine or eight, it was eight, right? Yes, thank you. Says that if there is a general plan amendment, that it can't take effect until, basically until either reasonable relocation is paid under the ordinance as provided therein, or by popular vote. So regardless of what happens to the closure, we have the right to go forward and look at, if the council chooses and believe it's the right decision now, to study this process, and to study a general plan amendment for that site. It really is separate from the closure. And having said that, that is why we move forward. There was a timely application, and as I said, we have an obligation to that landowner as well as anyone else. And again, the filing of a lawsuit does not stay any of the actions that the council's taken so far.
So hypothetically speaking, we don't know what the outcome is of this lawsuit that was filed against the city by the residents of the mobile home park because of the closure impact report that the council approved. Depending on the outcome of this particular case, do we, could that throw all of this off? All of this could have been moot if the arrangement or agreement is reached in terms of the appropriate reasonable relocation cost?
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't believe a decision in that lawsuit's going to affect this, because at the end of the day, the ordinance has to be followed. And the ordinance says the applicant, or the park owner in that case, would have to pay to have a general plan amendment that changes it from mobile home exclusive to something else, has to pay either relocation as defined in the ordinance, or it has to go to a popular vote. So let's, as we know, it takes time for this whole process to take place. In this case, let's argue, just for the sake of argument, say that the lawsuit was not to be found in favor of the tenants, then even if the council were to get to a point of it going for study, it goes to a planning commission, it comes back to you, which we say would take at least till next, early next year at the soonest, then even if the council were to decide that they were going to change the designation, it would be contingent and only go into effect when reasonable relocation was paid under our closure report. If a court was to come back and say, and I want to be very clear, the action against us and Newberry, twelve hundred Newberry, as the real party interest, the park owner, is a red action. It's only to test the council's decision. So if a court came back and said, we believe that the council should have considered A, B, or C, or you have to, we look at this issue, we would bring that back to the council, and the council would make a decision again. And based on that decision, the park owner, if the council were to approve a change in the land use designation, would again either have to pay what council sets out as the relocation, or he would be asked to have it go to a popular vote, and would have to go through that whole process. So again, this does not, I see the, as two separate tracks, and the, an application's been filed, and we have an obligation to bring it forward. Again, this is a discretionary decision based on the city council to consider this request and to look at the request.
Okay, and I'm just trying to look at the various scenarios. The ordinance does state, as you mentioned, that reasonable costs have to be of relocation have to be paid in order for the land use element designation to be changed without a vote of the people. If for some reason, the owner of the mobile home park does not pay the relocation costs, then what, what would happen with this particular application?
Okay, if we go through this whole process, and say we are a year out, and I'm just using that as an example, and the, it comes forward to the city council, and there is, and these are so many ifs, that means it's been studied, we go through an environmental review, it goes to the planning commission with a recommendation back to the city council to change the designation. And as you know, right now, we are looking at it to be changed to high-density so that it can accommodate affordable housing, which is what's recognized by the state, that's a higher density. If all of those things happened, and the, the park has not closed yet, and relocation has not been paid yet, the general plan amendment would not go into effect until all tenants were paid according to the, what's ever been approved by the city council. So we can go through this whole process, the council could approve it, but it would be contingent on that happening. So, and say in the meantime, there is also entitlements that are, that are also filed, because we're asking for concurrent processing. At the end of the day, nothing can take effect until, because a change in zone as well can't occur until those relocation costs are paid. So it would be contingent. That's really what the, our understanding, and we have the right to interpret and apply the ordinance means, and I believe we did talk, discuss that in the staff report as well, because we knew people would be interested in that.
Okay, I do understand the argument. I also read recently about the El Dorado case, the city of Palm Springs. Apparently, if I'm not mistaken, the owner of that particular mobile home park is now asking the city of Palm Springs to step in and buy that land from him or her, whoever the owners are. And that, of course, is a scenario that not very many people envisioned, but apparently that is becoming the case now with the El Dorado case. So I'm just trying to see why and whether the city should expend staff time and resources working on something that in the end, although it may be a remote possibility, nonetheless is a possibility that things may not pan out, and that the general plan designation may not actually happen for whatever reasons, technical or otherwise.
Thank you again. Again, I think that the council should look at this as, again, I believe, two separate issues. But this decision tonight is a discretionary decision by the council on whether you think it is in the public's interest to move forward at studying the general plan designation. I guess I look at it as, I don't know what's happening in the city of Palm Springs or that park, but we have a park that has applied for closure and received council's approval. Having a park closed, I think, means that there's going to be an ultimately a change in use of that park, that it will be something different. His filing, this application, is an indication that's what he chooses to do. Again, I will say, I do have a concern, given the history on this park, that the council itself studied it at a prior time and voted to change the general plan to designation to high-density, which is what he's now applying for. There are, this applicant do, does, doesn't have a right to go forward, but if council chooses not to go forward, we need to be clear on those reasons, even though it's a discretionary approval. And the fact that there's a lawsuit pending, the remedy, if the tenants believe that somehow affects them, is to go to court. There is no automatic stay, nothing about the lawsuit can stay the council's actions at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions? We do have cards on this, but I want to ask the city attorney, what would be the possible consequences of not, not following the recommendation this evening? What are, what are the alternatives here?
I mean, the alternative, at any time that a land use, application comes forward for a general plan land use designation, that it is within your prerogative. I would, we would have to articulate reasons why we don't believe it's in the best interest to move forward, as the language that's in the statute, and I believe is in the staff report. And at this point in time, you know, the city has been in a difficult position in terms of this whole, everything that's happened, because in terms of background history, we still have a lawsuit pending against us by the park owner, and we have a lawsuit pending against us by the tenants.
Okay. Well, if I recall, the city had requested and had encouraged the land use change at the front, somewhere at the front end of this scenario, couple, two, three, how many, ever many years out, with the hope and the expectation that if, if we were to get a land use designation for the property, that we might be able to work something out to accommodate the tenants, and get them into fixed housing, new fixed housing on the site, give them an owner equity position, and move forward in that manner. Is, is that still a possibility, or is that something that's, that's completely removed and separate from this?
As you know, there are no entitlement applications with this, so I can't say that it's, that that's going to happen. I can tell you that the staff has been in discussions with our housing partners, and with the housing authority specifically, who has been in discussions with the property owner. Those discussions are ongoing. In the past, what happened in any time when we just went through our whole housing element update, that the state recognizes a minimum density of twenty units per acre for it to be considered land that can be used for affordable housing. So we, our staff has moved forward in supporting this recommendation, because having, if it ultimately is reclassified to high-density, will give the best chance that some type of multifamily housing, maybe not owner, but rental or something else, that may be able to accommodate tenants to, to be able to live there.
As part of the relocation settlement process, or...
Well, and as we've said, this is sort of off-subject a little bit, so I don't want to go too far, but staff has also been working with our housing partners, and at this point, no six-month notice has been given. In fact, we haven't, there has been no six-month notice for park closure given, and we plan to work with our housing partners as well as tenants in the future to make sure and to help people with the ability to move transitional housing. And at the end of the day, if an affordable project is built there to work, that there will be spots for those tenants that want to move back to that site.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Albano. I have, I have three speaker cards on this subject, and I have five, five statement cards which I have circulated, so that the council members will all have had an opportunity to read the statement cards. I'll go through the speaker, the statement cards. I'll go through the speaker cards, and then we'll, we'll get back to our discussion on this. The first speaker this evening, Penny Mayhew, Penny, followed by Dan Douglas. Ms. Mayhew? That's fine, take your time. Good evening.
Hi. Penny Mayhew, Canejo Mobile Home Park, thank you for the opportunity again. This is kind of a surprise to us. We weren't given very much notice to be here tonight. Benar and his attorneys know that you cannot change the zoning until receive our so-called relocation funds. Now, because of the new lawsuit, that amount is undecided. We don't know what is going to happen. Also, a vote from the community enters into this. If you do what you guys want, what we're discussing, what you guys want to do, you're going completely against your own ordinance. And when you discuss about putting affordable housing on that site, there are none of us that will be able to afford to live there. And I think that this kind of puts you guys in dangerous waters by making a decision before the court, before we have a chance to have our say in court. Because as, as the way it stands now, with this relocation fund that is offered to us, it's going to make us all homeless. We have no place to go. And basically, I think that's about all I have to say about this. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dan Douglas, followed by Janet Wall.
Hi, Dan Douglas from Newberry Park. You know, I guess it was a couple of years ago, your ten goals of the city, the number one priority was protect the mobile home parks. And, you know, I believed you when you said that, and I guess, you know, now's your, your chance to prove that. You know, while you study this issue, I want you to picture what happened at my house about a week ago, an eighty-five-year-old man in my living room crying. An 85-year-old man in my living room crying. He doesn't know what he's going to do, he doesn't know where he's going to go. You know, somehow, I'm sure he'll end up somewhere, but you know, the stress from this, you know, and we don't get any straight answers on anything, we never have. You know, whose idea was it to change the density to high, high density the first time? Because as I recall, Joe Bednar wanted to build assisted living there. And, you know, that's when I learned of the regional housing needs assessment. You know, I don't know what the consequences are if you don't have your regional housing needs assessment up to par what it's supposed to be. But, you know, the irony is, is you're going to close the mobile home park and take a self-sustaining, very fragile mobile home community, and as Mr. Gillette said, cast them adrift. And, and who's going to be replacing that? Who's going to replace us? High density? You know, what's that mean? That means, you know, are you going to have HUD housing, people that, you know, I mean, we're self-sustaining now. It doesn't cost the taxpayers any money for us to be there. But when you bring in this high density with these, you know, I don't know what the plan is going to be, but I have a feeling it's going to cost me money. My tax money is, you know, I'm going to lose my place, and I'm going to put money in for somebody else to take my place. Yeah, just like I said, try to think about, you know, us for once, and use your conscience. It's, it's really hard. I mean, you know, I've said it before, but people are worried sick up there. And when I mean sick, I mean physically sick. And it's just too bad. I wish we could just get this behind us one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Final speaker, Janet Wall.
Good evening, Janet Wall. I live in the city of Thousand Oaks. I think the first thing I want to address is that one of the residents asked Jeff Spector why they hadn't received written notice that this was coming before you tonight, and they were told that there isn't a legal requirement. I would like to request that in all of the mobile home parks in this city, that you have a little extra consideration in whether there's a legal requirement or not. You have a moral requirement to notify the people about what you're contemplating, and that wasn't done. There's a lot of people that don't even know this is happening tonight. The second matter, I think council member Bill de la Penya stated it very succinctly. You are wasting staff time and taxpayer money by studying a general plan amendment before the lawsuit is resolved. This isn't two separate tracks. This, this is one situation. The people in this park have not been treated fairly, they're still not being treated fairly, and you need to resolve it. It's a shame that it has to go to court again. And if it isn't resolved that time around, it's going to go to a higher court. This isn't over. You can't treat people this way. They own their homes. Granted, Joe Bednar bought this park to close it, it's been a park for a long time, people have made money off of them while they've had a place to live. You can't take it all away. Thank you.
That concludes the speaker cards on this. Any staff follow-up?
Well, just in case anyone was wondering, we made calls to the homeowners association representatives about this meeting, and we were under the impression that the word would be spread amongst, amongst the tenants. It's not a public hearing, so it's true, there was not a requirement to send out hearing notices, but we, as a courtesy, we took it upon ourselves to make several phone calls and call the people that we, for which we had numbers to get the word out.
Okay. Thank you. Any response to comments you're watching? All right. Council, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. No more cards?
No, that's it.
All right. Then I'm going to move the recommendation of staff, items one, two, and three. I think the city attorney outlined the difficulty in this case well. There are still unknowns. I think Mr. Douglas pointed out in his comments, one way or the other, they'd like to put this issue behind them, although certainly the residents of the park and the council recognize that there are many that would certainly choose one track versus another. You know, there is history here where the city, in very good faith, tried on behalf of the residents to find a mediated solution. Residents were represented by an attorney, were unable to get agreement through that process. There have been a number of attempts to find some common ground with the park owner and the city and the residents on what a reasonable relocation fee would be. Those attempts were unsuccessful, even though done in good faith. At the time that the council adopted the ordinance, we did it essentially over the objection of our own city attorney. Ms. Albano very clearly indicated at that hearing that she saw serious legal challenges that could be raised as related to the ordinance. But out of acting, I don't believe in error, but out of acting at the, uh, the interest of the residents, the council adopted that ordinance. We didn't even put it to a vote. There wasn't a ensuing lawsuit, the court opined, and they ruled against the city of Thousand Oaks. And essentially, the court agreed with our own city attorney. Now, the city is faced with a court decision that is against the city. We're still in active litigation with residents and the park owner, and now the park owner has brought, which his is right, anybody's right for that matter, a request for a general plan amendment. And that general plan amendment is the exact general plan amendment that the council originally was looking at and reviewing relative to a different use of the site. And the idea from the council's perspective is that if we're in fact going to lose affordable housing, then we want to replace it, if we can, with affordable housing. And at the time, there was some idea that even the residents that may be displaced at the mobile home park may have some first opportunity to rent new apartments at an affordable rate. Certainly not all of them. It's my understanding that some of the rents there are extremely low, even a couple of hundred dollars, and that just may simply not be feasible in Thousand Oaks in 2010. But maybe a number of residents could stay at that location after the new affordable project was built. I don't know if that's the case now, but that's essentially what the council has in front of them. These are difficult decisions. It does affect people's lives. That is not lost on the city council. I don't know who's going to be homeless or not homeless, but it is clear to this council member and this council that the impending closure of the park may have a negative impact and in fact will have negative impact on some of the residents. There's certainly no dispute about that. Sometimes matters come to the city council that are taken out of our jurisdiction and they're brought to court. And I can clearly remember talking to a much more crowded room than this, the night we had the hearing, that in my view, in my estimation, when council allows issues to be decided by a judge, in a sense, the community gets let down, because you have somebody that's opining based on the law and really not based on what's in the interests of the people we were elected to represent. And that's essentially what happened here. The judge ruled based very clearly on statutory law and what the legislature had outlined when it wrote the laws that affect mobile home parks, and, and that issue has been essentially decided. While there may be appeals, it would be reckless, beyond description, for this city council to continue down a path that could lead to damages in the hundreds or even millions of dollars. And so, I'm going to move these recommendations, not that I necessarily think it's the right thing for the residents. I recognize, and the council recognizes, that this may not be what the residents want, but I think as the city attorney pointed out, at this stage of this process, this council is charged with doing what's in the best interest of this city and this community. And by moving forward, given the litigation that's pending, given past history of the city council, there is no question, this is the right and responsible thing to do. So, those comments, I'm moving items one, two, and three.
Thank you. We have a motion. Comments? No? Additional comment? Mrs. Bill de la Penya?
Thank you. I, I did have some time to think about this particular proposal, and in viewing the history, I am not convinced that going forward at this time with the initiation to study a general plan designation is going to be worthwhile, because it will require spending staff time, research time. It will cost money to do this. Not knowing the outcome of this particular lawsuit that has, this most recent lawsuit that has been filed against the city, I strongly and fervently believe that we should wait until that particular outcome, given the fact that another case similar to this, I mentioned already Eldorado, is now actually turning out to be very different from what everybody thought would happen. It has not closed, that particular mobile home park has not closed. Then there is the decision in Sonoma County, which a judge actually, where a judge actually ruled in favor, to some extent, of the tenants. And I believe that there is no harm at this time to wait until we have a verdict, a decision, a ruling from a judge, and that could come sooner than later. It may not take that long to get a decision, because the, the past decisions involving the city of Thousand Oaks did not take terribly long. Basically, I also have, there is no guarantee that the high-density residential will indeed offer affordable housing. There, there is no guarantee at this point. It, it will, it will be my hope that once this is all said and done, that homes, apartments would be built and help the displaced tenants. At this point in time, studying this and going forward with this does not guarantee that actual affordable, low-income housing will be built. So, that being said, I will not support the motion.
Additional comment to the motion? To selectively pick out cases around California, of course, the other side of this is the Golida case, where the city was handed its, well, worked out very different and placed a municipality in severe financial jeopardy. I, I trust the information handed to us by the city attorney that these are separate issues, and to, to go contrary to the, the right of one of the participants in this to action on their applications, to me just adds to the, the confusion of, of the issues. So, I'm going to support the motion. Any additional comment? There being none, Mr. Fox, maker of the motion? Additional comment?
I think just for the record, I'd like the city attorney to give us an opinion, if she could, and opined on, if she would consider a legal finding, one where the council would say, we want to wait for the lawsuit to be resolved prior to taking action. Would that be a defendable finding?
No, because the, of filing the lawsuit doesn't stay any of the actions. I mean, and quite frankly, as I said, these are separate tracks, but Mr. Bednar has a 1,200 Newberry Park, let's put it in the right way, 1,200 Newberry has the right to move forward with the closure, even with a lawsuit pending, and it's, obviously, it's at his risk if something happens down the road, but it's incumbent on the plaintiff's bringing an action to ask for a stay. And in this situation where the, the, excuse me, in this situation where the ordinance is clearly split up, and at the end of the day, he either has to pay or have a vote, there would be no reason that this lawsuit should uphold the right for him to ask for a change, an initiation of that change. So, saying that a lawsuit's pending would not, I don't believe, be defensible.
Right. So, the council members, conscious of the norms, but just clarification, the council members rationale behind waiting until essentially the court cases, if we were to go down that road and, and the majority of the council were to vote with that, at that as our finding, you would, that would be a legally indefensible finding.
I believe that's true.
Okay. All right. All right. With that clarification, I think, again, we're, because of the complexity and the legalities of this case, we're placed in a situation where we really need to do what is right in protecting the community against further damages and further litigation. This is a reasonable and legal request. I cannot come up with a finding, and I have thought about this, a finding that would be defensible, that we would deny this initiated general plan amendment, given the fact that this very council acted on this exact item and made essentially this general plan amendment prior to the, the initiation of the, of the petition and adoption by the city council. There, there is no finding that we could come up with that would be defensible, and I think as the mayor pointed out, we'd just be making this issue more complex and probably more expensive.
Thank you. Okay. Please vote.
Motion carries four to one. Council member Bill de la Penya dissenting.
Thank you. Item 10, redevelopment agency reports, we have none. Item 11, commission, committee commission board reports, we have none. Item 12, council issues, recommendations, and follow-up reports, we have none. City manager follow-up to requests, anything, Mrs. Hahn?
Item 13, I'm sorry.
Correct. There's the two items that we want to follow up from public comments tonight relative to the ACP warning, want to make sure that we're going to get the word out on that, so we're working with city staff to work on that. And we also follow up with the individual that was concerned about the notice having to do with the hospital. We will work with them. We wanted to also let you know that the next two meetings coming up in June are June 8th and June 22nd. On June 8th, we'll be talking about the delinquent wastewater liens, that's an annual thing that we do, inclusionary housing in lieu, non-residential linkage fees update, and an affordable housing ordinance density, density bonus program, along with the municipal service center expansion. On the 22nd, we'll be following up with department reports on the budget for 2010-11. With that, that's all I have.
Okay. Item 14, closed session. City attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the viewing public and staff. Council will be going into closed session with labor negotiators, the city's designated representatives, city manager, assistant city manager, and human resource director, employee organizations, senior management association, Thousand Oaks Management Association, Thousand Oaks City Employees Association, unrepresented groups, executive and temporarily hourly pursuant to government code section 54, 957.6, and there will not be a need to report out anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Albano. At this time, the council will adjourn in memory. We're adjourning our meeting in memory of Martha Balfour, mother of our municipal service center, senior administrative secretary, Becky Balfour. Martha Balfour was born in Butler, Pennsylvania in 1919. She married, raised her children, and lived in Pennsylvania until she passed away this May. Martha enjoyed her work as a nurse's aide at Butler County Hospital Nursery for 25 years. She also is known for her talent with gardening. Martha and her husband were married for 59 years, and together they raised two daughters and one son. Favorite pastime, later in her life, was being with her two wonderful grandchildren. They were the true joys of her life. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, we send our deepest condolences to the Balfour family. We will now stand adjourned to our next regular meeting on Tuesday, June 8th, 2010. We are adjourned.